They're starting.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Roseville City Council Meeting of November 2nd, 2022. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask our clerk to please read the roll.
Vice Mayor Haldishell?
Here.
Councilmember Albert?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Rakucci?
Here.
And Mayor Bernasconi?
Here, thank you. I'd like to ask our Grants Commissioner Renee Perez if she would please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
..................................................................
Thank you. I'd like to ask our clerk to please announce the reading procedures.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Roseville City Council Meeting. If you're present here tonight and have not already picked up an agenda, they are available at the end of the staff table to your right. As a reminder, the Brown Act prohibits the city council from taking action or discussing items that are not listed on tonight's agenda. Each speaker may address the city council at the podium. They will be provided with three minutes during public comment on non-agenda items. The maximum allotted time for comments is 25 minutes. Additionally, speakers that would like to comment on agendized items, those appearing on tonight's agenda, have five minutes to express their concerns and comments to the city council. There will be a monitor and a red light that will be blinking at the podium, so we request that the speakers please conclude their comments once they see the blinking light. Lastly, if you are addressing the city council tonight, please consider stating your name for the record. With that, thank you for your civic participation and welcome to the City of Roseville.
Thank you very much. We have a few presentations this evening. We will start with item 5.1, which is a proclamation for National Nurse Practitioner Week of November 13th through the 19th, 2022. I've asked Councilmember Rakucci if she would help-
Is it down there?
Yes, yes. If she would go to the podium. And do we have someone here for this this evening? Is Patty here this evening? Or Dr. Gerday?
A nurse practitioner?
I just walked in the room.
Is that you?
Who?
Are you the doctor? Well, come on down.
All right, I will come on down. Thank you, ma'am.
Councilmember Rakucci will make the presentation and then we'll give you a minute to say something. Does that work?
Sure.
I'm very happy to do it. I'm a registered nurse, so I'm just-
Thank you very much.
So this is National Nurse Practitioner Week.
It is.
And- Nurse practitioners serve as trusted frontline providers of health care for patients in California, and they are advanced-practice-registered nurses who have advanced clinical education and training and building upon their initial registered nurse preparation. And there are 270,000 licensed nurse practitioners in the United States and over 30,000 nurse practitioners in California, providing primary, acute, and specialty care to patients of all ages, walks of life. And nurse practitioners, they diagnose, they treat, they prescribe medications and other treatments to patients through caring and patient-centered holistic model of care. Whereas citizens of our state and nation have a great trust in how quality nurse practitioners provide, and they result over 1 billion patients they visit annually in nurse practitioners across the United States. Whereas five decades of research demonstrates that the high quality of care provided by nurse practitioners has been great. And whereas leading governmental and policy entities, including the National Academy of Medicine, National Council of State Boards of Nursing, National Governors Association, and Federal Trade Commissions have taken notice of the benefits of nurse practitioners for their full practice authority and have endorsed their regulatory model. Roseville is proud to recognize and honor the service of nurse practitioners in our state. And therefore, for Mr. Bernasconi, our mayor, and our council members, in recognition of countless contributions that nurse practitioners have made in the half-century, we'll continue to make health and well-being of citizens in our state very good. And we proclaim November 13th and 19th Nurse Practitioners Week. And all the times I worked in a hospital and in and out as working with them or them being my nurse practitioner, they've been excellent and they're good.
Good, thank you very much. Sure. Well, thank you. I'm Jeff Souza, the immediate past president of the California chapter here in the greater Sacramento area of nurse practitioners. We're the second-largest chapter. We are quickly gaining on Orange County and soon to hope to surpass them as well. Nurse practitioners, as has been mentioned, provide care on the front line, both in specialty and in primary care. And we're just here in support of and appreciate your support of us as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to item 5.2, which is the REACH Committee check presentation to the Shriners Children's Hospital. And is Leah Estrada here? Okay, if you want to come forward, we'll have our Vice Mayor. It's our Vice Mayor.
So-
Can we call up the REACH Committee as well?
Yes.
Some of them are here.
So Leah, I just wanted to open up by saying, on the council, we have opportunities to be in the community. And I had an opportunity in September to attend a luncheon put on by Shriners. And while I was there, I introduced myself on behalf of the council as being from Roseville. And the gentleman who is the Director of Development, Alan Anderson, with Shriners said, "We love Roseville's REACH Committee." And so I thought, you know, I would bring you and the Shriners together, and you could talk a little bit about REACH. And I think you have something for Shriners, and Shriners has something for you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Bruce Haldishell, and good evening, Mayor and council. So my name is Leah Estrada. I am the Chair for REACH, our REACH Committee, which REACH stands for Roseville Employees Annual Charitable Hearts. REACH is the city's employee-giving program, which staff donates money, goods, and services. We host fundraisers to bolster nonprofits that serve our community, just like we do. We host sock drives, pet supply donations, conduct job familiarization programs for at-risk teens, and we distribute meals at senior facilities, in addition to donating to charities through payroll deductions. This year, we were able to host our first charity softball tournament after a three-year hiatus. And with that, we had three teams that chose to donate to Shriners Hospital, and we were able to raise $1,245. And we would like to present that check to Shriners today. So here's the check we were able to have.
There you go. There you go.
Thank you. So big. So with that, I will turn it over to Alan, and you had a few words to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, before you go, at our luncheon, so Shriners Children's Northern California this year is part of a triple anniversary. The Shriners themselves are celebrating their 150th anniversary as a fraternity, and that's across North America and Europe and South America. Shriners, they founded the hospital system 100 years ago, with the first hospital being in Shreveport. And our hospital is 99 years old in terms of orthopedics, but locally, we're celebrating our 25th anniversary. At the luncheon, we issued and we gave attendees a challenge coin, just thanking them for the work that they do in the community and challenging them to kind of continue to help raise awareness and remind people that we are here to serve, serve all children. And Bruce very kindly presented me with his coin to present to you. So this is your challenge coin-
Oh, thank you.
On behalf of REACH. And I just want to say that, and standing here, it's a privilege because I represent not just the people who work at Shriners Children's Northern California for kids, but all the people who support us and make what we do possible, including the employees of Roseville. So to date, REACH has generated $167,661 for Shriners Children's Northern California, over 381 individual gifts. So I want you, on behalf of the employees of Roseville, thank you. Thank you very much. And I also want to say that you have great health care in Roseville. We are not here to supplant what is occurring on a regular basis in your great programs. We are here to do the things we do best in our specialties, which is burns, acute-inpatient rehabilitation, pediatric surgery, and then a broad range of orthopedics. And the gifts that we're celebrating today enable us to say yes to every child and every family that requests our care. So I just want to thank you for making this program possible and for being a part of making what we do possible. So, thank you.
And, you know, just to wrap this up, in this process of putting it together, I've learned how far your reach is at Shriners. There's a pun intended there, right? With our own employees having the services. And I know in talking with my favorite coffee owner that his daughter is going to be going to Shriners in a few weeks. So thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to item 5.3, which is Sacramento Area Council of Governments Blueprint Project. And I believe we have some representation from SACOG there. Hi, Casey.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me? My light, okay. I will also try to project a little more. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I'm Casey Lazon. I'm Deputy Executive Director at the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. Next slide, please. Here to extend to you, well, to present some information and extend an invitation to you to work with us and engage with us in a project that we are about to embark on with, actually with your Placer County Transportation Planning Agency as well. It is a long-range plan for the Sacramento region. But first, what I'd like to do is just give a quick orientation to what SACOG is. We are, this is a map of the SACOG region, so there are 22 cities and six counties within the region. SACOG is a metropolitan planning organization that is a federal designation. So we're responsible for doing regional transportation planning and funding for the six-county area. We also have responsibilities under state law, and we do that in very close coordination with your Placer County Transportation Planning Agency, which I'll reference as we go through this. SACOG is also a voluntary association of the cities and counties in the Sacramento region. So we're a joint powers agency. We are the only agency, a public agency in the region, where every single city and county sits around the table at least once a month to discuss issues that are important to more than one jurisdiction or bigger than one can solve, to think about the future, planning for the future, coordinating that, and making investments in the future. And you are represented, Roseville, by your Mayor Bernasconi on the SACOG board. Next slide, please. So I'm here to talk about a project that we are launching. It's the update of our regional plan. We're calling it Blueprint, in homage to an original regional effort that was started about 20 years ago. That was a voluntary effort where all of the cities and counties in the region looking at the growth that was expected to come to the region and trying, and having a conversation about how is it that we can accommodate this growth that's coming to our region in a way that maintains or improves our quality of life. And that ultimately became the Blueprint vision, which was really a growth strategy for how the region could grow over a long period of time. The plan that we are updating now, it's technically called the Metropolitan Transportation Plan and Sustainable Community Strategy. That's a mouthful. And so that's why we are rebranding it to the Blueprint. Now, there is also a regional transportation plan. That is what Placer County Transportation Planning Agency does for the Placer County jurisdictions. And so that regional transportation plan is incorporated into the SACOG blueprint. Next slide, please. So what I want to talk about, though, first is what is this regional plan? So every city and county has a general plan. That is your own blueprint of what you want your city or your county to be over time. It has policies for growth, for transportation, for economic development, for so many different things. The regional plan that we develop at SACOG is not that. It is the opportunity for cities and counties to really have a chance to coordinate how their different plans work together. Because we know that people and businesses, they don't just operate within jurisdictional boundaries. They live their lives across jurisdictions. And so really, this is an opportunity to figure out, how does that growth all coordinate? How do we strategically invest in transportation infrastructure? What policies can we put in place at the regional level to support your local visions being developed? The other thing that this regional plan is, it's a requirement under federal and state law. So any transportation project, if it's roadway, highway, sidewalks, bike and ped trails, transit, rail, any transportation investment that is going to go after federal or state funding or receive it, needs to be included in this plan. So that's the other part of it. Now, what else is this plan? Well, so this plan is a strategic and fiscally constrained plan. That is one of the many requirements that we have under federal and state law. It is not a stapling exercise. So we don't just go around to every community and say, hey, what is it that you want? And we staple it all together, and then we send it off. It's actually subject to a number of different rules and requirements. Air quality targets, greenhouse gas reduction targets. We have to deal with congestion, with increasing mobility for people. So there are a number of things that it tries to do. Next slide, please. It's a lot. It's a strange plan to come and talk about, to say that we want to get your engagement in this. So here's another analogy that I want to try out with you. So it's about balancing needs. In this, think of it from an individual's perspective. So you have a home, and that home, next slide, please, over time, it ages. It gets a hole in the roof. It needs a new roof. Next slide, please. And at the same time, you realize you really need to build another room to accommodate a growing family, and you have a limited budget. And so how is it that you accommodate these things? Do these things that you need to do for this home that you live in within that budget? And having, figuring out, how do you time that and make that happen over time? So that, that's kind of like an individual description of what we're really trying to do on a regional level. Next slide, please. So to kick this off, the SACOG board has adopted a triple bottom-line framework for the development of this blueprint plan that's going to look out many years into the future. What they're saying is, okay, this plan that is going to be a plan for how we accommodate population and job growth and housing development, this plan that has to indicate, like, what kind of transportation investments we need, it's going to tell us where, you know, where we're going to be trying to do that so that we can support growth, so that we can support a sustainable environment. We want it to be grounded in the triple bottom line. So that means everything that we are investing in the region, can we do that in a way that it really meets goals of equity? So really, how do we use our public resources to really support the mobility and the access to economic opportunity for all people? How do we, on the economy side, support this economy, grow the sectors that are really of importance in this region, create, again, access to opportunity for people so that they can participate fully in the economy and meet the goal of sustaining our environment? So how do we invest in growth in this region so that we can accommodate that growth, but we can also be a place where people can thrive for generations? Clean water, clean air, healthy life. Next slide, please. So when it comes to the transportation components of this plan, when we think about a triple bottom line, what are the ways that we might think about that? Well, with transportation, thinking about transportation investments that meet the goals of equity, economy, and environment, it may mean that we're trying to figure out where are their mobility needs? There are people who, like, they just can't get to places because they don't have either the resources or they don't have, you know, the physical transportation system isn't working for them. And so maybe that's something that we need to invest in. Maybe there is a way for people to get around, but the roadway is unsafe if you're trying to walk or bike or find other ways of getting around. Maybe there's transportation infrastructure that is really in disrepair, but it's critical infrastructure for, you know, for business and for people to use. And so we need to focus on that. There's many different ways that we could figure out what a triple bottom line of investment is in transportation. Our goal is to engage in a regional conversation to figure out what that is. Next slide, please. And so here's how we wanted to want to start in on that. We are going to develop some future pathways. These are scenarios for the future, because we're doing a long-range plan out to the year 2050. We are a region that is growing. We, that's a good thing. We want to be a growing region, a dynamic region, not a dying region. And so when we look at the people and the people who will be here over that time period, the jobs that we will be seeing, the housing that needs to be built for all of them, there are many different ways that that could land on the ground. And so we want to create some future pathways that shows distinctly different development patterns for all of those, because that will help us to understand what are the implications for people's mobility, for their housing choice, for agriculture, for public health, for air quality. And we want to be able to share those implications and have a conversation about, again, a regional conversation to figure out, what is it that people value? What is it that should be prioritized in this plan? Next slide, please. Really briefly, I'm going to touch on what these pathways, the foundations of these pathways. So this map is, the dark blue shows the existing urban footprint within the region, the six-county region. The light blue areas show the areas where local plans or policies allow for development. So it's like building out the urban area. In the first pathway, we're looking at what if 40% of growth was accommodated within existing communities, and the balance of it was accommodated through expanding those jurisdictions? Under the second pathway, if 67% or two-thirds of that growth was accommodated within existing communities, and the balance of it was through expanding those boundaries. And then the third pathway is if 90% of growth was accommodated within existing communities, and then the rest of it was through expansion. So this is, these are regional numbers. Any individual jurisdiction, any individual community isn't going to line up exactly with this. But in total, when you add it all up, what are the implications, again, for people's quality of life, for their daily life, for business? That's what we're trying to understand. We want to translate those implications into statements of value so that we can then go out. Next slide, please. And as I said, have conversations across the region. And so this is where the first invitation comes. We are looking at lots of different tactics to engage residents, to engage businesses, constituencies that are hard to reach. So one, we want to do pop-up workshops. We're looking at doing that next year. And so we'd love to go to where people are at. If there are community events, festivals, any place where people are already gathering, that's where we want to be able to go so that we can bring, which translating all of this tough information into something where people can actually give us their opinions on what they value. The second thing that we're looking for is if there are any community-based organizations in your community that work with hard-to-reach populations, we would love to be connected with them so that we can try to do some tailored outreach with them for those constituencies to really bring those voices to the table. And then thirdly, if there are any other community leaders in addition to yourself that would be able to get the word out to participate, we would love to be connected with them. Next slide, please. So all of this is scheduled to be happening in 2023. Ultimately, we are looking to have this plan adopted in 2024. Now, what does that look like? Next slide, please. When this plan is adopted, we go through implementation for the next four years. And I want to give you a highlight of a few different programs and projects that SACOG runs that are implementation of this plan. So you just get a sense of what is the purpose even of this long-range plan. So the first of these I'm showing here is our Engage and Power Implement Program. This is a funding program that was launched by the board, SACOG board, about two years ago, really as part of the effort to understand how SACOG can support racial equity and reducing racial disparities in the region, in health and access to opportunity and wealth. The program is being designed now, and it funds community engagement. So it's for local governments to apply in partnership with community-based organizations to basically fund a process for communities to identify problems and then solutions. The purpose being, once they do that, they can then go and build that solution, go apply for grant funding to build that solution. There are a number of state and federal grant programs now that are looking for meaningful community engagement. And so we are, our hope is that this program will position communities to be able to go after that. And we are working in partnership with PCTPA to try to design this so that if that is something that PCTPA wants to do, that they could plug into that framework. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Another program that we've launched, this came out of our last long-range plan, it's Green Means Go. It is another grant program, and it funds the, the non-transportation infrastructure for infill. So every, nearly every community in the Sacramento region has nominated a green zone, and those zones are now eligible to apply for funding for water, sewer, drainage, anything, any of that infrastructure that would help with getting infill housing built in these green zones. I also want to pause here and say, this was, this is probably, this is an amazing accomplishment because it took every city and county in the region advocating for three years in order for a state funding program to be created. And so now we're seeing the benefits of that. Next slide, please. All right. Another program, Mega Region Working Group. This is a partnership of the Sacramento region, of the Bay Area, and San Joaquin regions. We have three board members from each of those regions sitting on that Mega Region Working Group. Placer County is well represented with Supervisor Gore on that group. And the whole purpose of this is to really, knowing that our regions are interconnected, their economies are interconnected, how can we best coordinate on the projects, the transportation projects that are of significance to all of our regions? And so this map shows a dozen projects that are mega-regionally significant. I'm going to call out in particular the third track of Capitol Corridor, that's from Sacramento to Roseville, a very important project. Next slide, please. Our Ready Set Trails Plan is a vision to have everyone in the region connected so that anyone can walk out or roll out of their home and be able to get anywhere within the region. Roseville has tremendous trails, and so imagine, this is actually not that hard to imagine that with this trail built, someone in Roseville could get anywhere within the region. Next slide, please. This one is our prosperity strategy. Again, a program out of our last plan, really focused on inclusive economic development in partnership with our, the partners that you see on the screen, our Economic Prosperity Partners. Next slide, please. And I want to end on our Youth Leadership Academy, which I think is very important when we talk about a plan that goes 30 years into the future. The planning that we are doing may not be necessarily for us, it may not be for me, maybe here, but it certainly is for them. And these are, this is a program that SACOG has been doing for a few years now. We take high school students who apply into the program, we teach them about regional, regional planning, local government, how to be civically engaged, a number of issues, in the hopes that we're planting the seed for their continued civic engagement into their adulthood, and maybe inspire some of them to run for office here someday. Maybe they'll sit on the SACOG Board, but ultimately, the work we do is for them. And that is the end of my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Casey?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bernascony, if you can open this matter up for public comment?
Okay. I'll open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to this item? You can come forward now. Okay. We'll close public comment, and we will move on to item 6.0, public comment. So now's the time for anyone to address accounts on any item that's not on the agenda. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to do that? Good evening.
Good evening. Respected Mayor and council members of the City of Roseville, my name is Bijaya Nair, and I've been a resident of Roseville for over seven years, and I'm a physician at Kaiser Hospital in Roseville. I'm here on behalf of the Hindu community to convey our greetings to the city on the occasion of Diwali, which is the festival of lights that was celebrated last week. On this occasion of victory of good over evil and light over darkness, we are doing a food drive for the needy in our community. The drive is called Seva Diwali. It's an initiative by different Dharmic communities in the Sacramento region, individuals as well as organizations, Hindu, Buddhist, Sikh, Jain, temples, Gurudwaras, different linguistic organizations from the Indian subcontinent that believe in Seva Dharma, which is basically that service to humanity is service to divinity. The mission of this drive is to foster togetherness and save our selfless giving for the welfare of the society by promoting the festive and enlightening spirit of Diwali. We have been doing Seva Diwali food drives for a few years now, and in the Sacramento area, last year we had about 30 organizations, about the same this year, that are coming together. Last year, we were able to donate about 7,600 pounds of food to 12 different local food banks in six counties, including Gathering Inn here in Roseville and Auburn. So we are in the middle of the food drive this year, and the concluding ceremony is in the middle of November, and would like to invite all of you to be part of it and to make this a big success. In the same vein, I would also like to announce another event that's coming up in January in the, in, in our attempt to contribute more to this community, we are doing a yoga, series of yoga events in January of 2023 with the idea of improving health and harmony in the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else here tonight who has a public comment? Any item not on the agenda? You can come forward now. Okay, that's it. I'll close public comment, and we'll move on to the consent calendar. If our clerk can please read the process for approving the consent calendar.
Thank you. All matters on consent are considered routine in nature and will be approved by one motion. There will be no discussion on consent calendar items unless a member of the city council, staff, or a member of the public requests that such item be pulled for further discussion. At this time, neither council or staff has made such request. However, we did receive two requests to pull items 7.1 and 7.16. Is there any other member of the public that would like to pull any item for further discussion tonight? I see no one else come up. If I can have a motion to approve all items on consent with the exception of 7.1 and 7.16.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor and a second. If I'm going to go ahead and start off with Vice Mayor Haldeschild.
Yes.
Councilmember Elverd.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernascony.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. With that, we'll start off with item 7.1, which is the minutes to prior meetings, and specifically October 5th, October 6th, October 19th, council meeting minutes.
Good evening.
Mayor, council members, I want to introduce myself today because you all knew who I am. In fact, my name is on all these open meeting minutes you are voting to approve here, and my name will be on today's minutes that you approve in the future. But I do ask the council unanimously approve item 7.1 here before you. However, I wanted a voice vote on this item because I believe that these last two meetings are indicative of a year-long trend that I've observed on this council. Now initially, I had the, submitted some slides in accordance with the newly updated City of Roseville council meetings, boards, commissions, and committees. Administrative standards approved October 19th, Agenda Item 7.8 on Monday morning. But these slides were just a visual summary of everything that you're voting to approve right now in the minutes. I had no other additional information on it. However, they're not here today, unfortunately. I was told that that's not the way we do things for submitting the slides as the ones we just saw the City of Sacramento bring up. So again, I had submitted these slides, and I have to stop referencing the agenda items because you won't have them in front of you. I don't want to lose you on my discussion points here, but I had to, after submitting the slides on Monday morning, was told that by the city clerk, that's not the way we do things. I had to go into City Hall, talk with the city clerk, and it didn't work out that she had to go to legal counsel. Legal counsel told us, that's not the way we do things of submitting slides so that everyone can, both the council and the public can see what we're voting on here. But that's okay. I won't have to address the last two meetings. I was going to cite them and their agenda items, however, I don't need to because all these shortfalls and trends I wanted to address are going to be, are found actually in today's meeting as well. They still exist today. So I think what we've seen here is we've seen that there, we're going to be giving, today we've given away, committed about $4 million from the council discretionary, from the, sorry, the city funds here. And after I'm speaking, we'll be getting about $2,187.17 of the council discretionary funds outside of the city budget. And I think that's good that you're able to do those sorts of things. Unfortunately, we're giving away good money to people like Pastor Massey Andre Evans here of the First United Methodist Church, and I think we should continue to do that. However, I want to make sure that this money, this $15,000 given to you by the city, is not distracting you from your duties of, on the council, duties I think have been deficient here. So what I've seen is, we have been previously giving away thousands of dollars to clients and pet causes of, on the council here itself, but I am glad to see that the council has met the bare minimum legal requirements as respected by the council members recusing themselves before votes that affect them directly. But I do ask that this, you not let this discretionary fund distract you from meeting the minimum legal requirements of your oversight of the city's government. So I won't be able to cite the last two meetings, two months of meetings, but I will cite today's example. So we talked about that you're just approved on a consent calendar over $4 million, and now you'll be, after I'm done speaking, another $2,187.17 given to the good people of Roseville that doesn't affect the city's budget. And then finally, today, you'll have the city's housing manager and economic development director will talk about applying for grants in the coming month and year. Now, this is great. However, it would have been nicer to do it earlier when I asked for this two months ago, on September 21st, back when I was told by the council, legal council, that we won't be able to do that before the end of the year, therefore, it isn't worth pursuing. This was in reference to the grants for homelessness within our area, that the council chose not to look at those things. But today, we had the City of, Sacramento Area Council and Governments was here, and if we had just looked ahead past two months, we would have been able to not just talk to them about Project Blueprint, but also about projects ongoing within the City of Roseville, such as Project Home Key, which is from the county within our area of expertise, with our area of influence here in Roseville itself. But again, I think we're too distracted with other things. The council wasn't able to pursue those grants because they were told by the city, by legal counsel, that we couldn't do that. We didn't have the time to do those sorts of things. So these are just examples that, again, come from just today. And so, but now I'll go ahead, that would spend about four minutes talking about the past two months, so I'll just close out with what we have today. Again, this is merely procedural vote, ask for unanimous approval, and I have nothing to say about this vote, because I believe, I have nothing to say because I believe that you have nothing to say. You've shown that-
Sir, can I wrap up your comments? You're over your time.
Absolutely. You've shown that I asked this, this council to do a better job of providing oversight over and pushing back against, that's just not the way we do things. I think just because it's not the way we do things here, we can still do better.
Thank you.
Thank you. If we can go ahead and approve item 7.1, that is the minutes for October 5th, October 6th, October 19th, and again, October 19th for special council meeting minutes.
I'll move that approval.
Thank you.
Seconded up.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start off with Vice Mayor Haldeschild.
Yes.
Councilmember Elverd.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernascony.
Yes, thank you.
Next, we have item 7.16. This is the Prospera at Fittament. It's the Affordable Rental Housing Housing Trust Fund Loan Agreement Promissory Note, Deed of Trust, and Regulatory Agreement and Budget Adjustment. This was, someone requested to have this item pulled for further discussion.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I want to first thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Renee Byers, and I represent the NorCal Carpenters Union. And today, I just want to speak about three things that will benefit this project and also will benefit the City of Roseville. And I believe these three things should also be basic labor standards. One, that's the use of apprenticeship programs. Two, that's healthcare for all workers. And three, which is local hire. I was looking online at this project, and it might have been already approved and it's underway. Under the objective design standards, it says, "When members of the community can afford to live in the same community where they work, it improves commute traffic, increases investment in local community, and improves an employer's ability to attract and retain employees." And that sounds fantastic, and I approve 100% to that. But you know where that counts first, is requiring developers to hire responsible general contractors who will not cheat their workers out of a livable wage, who will pay them carpenter area standard wages and benefits, and who will hire locally. We have hundreds of carpenters who live right here in this neighborhood, but have to travel to San Francisco to work when they have projects such as this right down the street. And so the NorCal carpenters have a very healthy selection of contractors who are able to assist in any project, and we're always open for conversation. What's happening in this, in this, not just this community, but all around Sacramento County, and I could go on any job site and talk to the workers, is they're getting cheated out of a livable wage, they're not receiving healthcare, some are getting paid in cash, and so therefore, those contractors are committing tax fraud. And this is happening. I have reports of those things, and this is the stuff that's happening under our watch, and we're allowing it to happen. We would love to work on these projects. We push to build. We want to build. The developers come with a great project, has the right setbacks, it has the right amount of trees, it has the right amount of everything that we're looking for, but what happens is they hire a non-responsible general contractor who in return cheats the community, cheats the workers, and I don't think that's right. And I think if we want to benefit, we want to add these projects that will benefit the community, it first starts with requiring developers to hire responsible general contractors. And so I just want to thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comment.
All right. With that, if I can get a motion to adopt, for tonight, the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 22417, approving a Housing Trust Fund Loan Agreement, a Promissory Note, a Deed of Trust, and a Regulatory Agreement, and a Declaration of Restrictive Covenants by and between the City of Roseville and Fittament Affordable Partners LP, and authorizing the city manager to execute it and any other related documents on behalf of the City of Roseville. And also consider adopting Ordinance Number 6570, authorizing certain amendments to the fiscal year 2022/23 budget, and declaring this ordinance to be immediately effective as an appropriation measure. If I can get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second? Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start off with our roll call with Vice Mayor Haldeschild.
Yes.
Councilmember Elverd.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernascony.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. The next couple items we have are for council discretionary funds. The first one is item 8.1, council discretionary funds from the Rotary Club of Roseville.
So the Rotary Club has requested an amount of $1,437.17 for a sign project that will support a Welcome to Roseville sign with the city emblem. And I understand Mr. Ralph Felix is here to, no? Someone from the Rotary Club is here. Thank you.
Good evening.
I'd be as awesome as Ralph Felix on my best day, but my name is Renee Perez. Good evening, Mayor Bernascony and city council members. Again, my name is Renee Perez, and tonight I am here on behalf of Ralph Felix and the Rotary Club of Roseville. Ralph's huge heart for our city became clear to me when he started this project, and I'm happy to support him any way I can, as our, as our, my fellow Rotarians here. Roseville has an absolutely amazing presence of service organizations that give so much to our community and have put us on the map for being a great place to live. Ralph's vision for Roseville is a welcoming city limit sign that recognizes those organizations, as is found in many other cities. He searched out all of the signs in our city's edges and found this particular Welcome to Roseville sign. If he could pull up the picture in his supporting documents that he sent.
I don't know that we, I don't know that we have those.
You have it.
They're in our packets.
So you have them. Yeah. Okay, cool. You got them. Okay.
He found this particular Welcome to Roseville sign buried under overgrown brush and forgotten, and has been putting his heart and energy into revitalizing it. Our club has gotten behind shovels, pressure washers, and bushwhackers to make this sign, again, be an appropriate welcome to our city while highlighting the many wonderful service organizations here. Tonight's request for $1,500 to cover the cost of a Welcome to Roseville sign that will be on top of the brick structure. As you can see from what he submitted, he has done a very diligent job of finding reasonably priced signs to complete the project. Further, he has taken on the responsibility of reaching out to all the Roseville service organizations for them to cover their cost and create signs representing their individual organizations. Our Rotary Club has taken on the additional responsibility of maintaining the sign as well as landscaping around it. well as landscaping around it. We respectfully ask for your consideration and support for his project. I am happy to answer any questions you may have, and thank you all for your time, energy, and service to our community.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of Renee from the council?
I have a couple. Renee, if each of the organizations, if they put a sign, they're responsible to take care of it, maintenance?
Correct. Their individual sign, but the big sign that holds the little signs, that's, we're keeping that under control with vegetation.
The brick, and that's city's, that's yours, that's?
Maybe somebody might have the answer to that. It turned out nobody really knew whose it was or who was maintaining it, it just kind of got lost in the shuffle. It's right across the street from BMR.
Well, I can see Roller King in the back, so I kind of know where it is. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, it was going to be.
Yeah.
Maintained.
Yes. That's, we have, we have taken that on as a club. Property that we will maintain, private property that we'll maintain, yes.
Okay. Any other questions, Renee?
I had one question, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I had one question. I was looking at the diagram as it was presented here, so it looks like there's an opportunity after the first three that are shown, the Rotary, the Chamber, and the Elks Lodge, for nine additional ones. And he said you've reached out to other service clubs. How many of those nine are already spoken for?
Less than nine.
Less than nine, okay. All right.
I know, I know we have a couple other service organizations here that want to speak as well as far as their, is their.
So, since you guys are going to be maintaining the sign, is there some sort of, I don't want to say oversight, but process in place that what's put on here is strictly just going to be their emblem, or their logo, or they're designated? I mean, I just want to make sure somebody isn't like put up some crazy, you know, just because they're labeled a service organization. There'll be some oversight and discipline on this.
I understand, yeah.
And the other thing, too, is it looks like from the third picture, these will be affixed by some sort of a screw or fastener, so that.
Right. There's some predetermined wood, I guess, bricks in the sign, but I'm thinking if it went farther than that, because there are more, there is more space below the little wood bricks. I'm not a contractor, but I can imagine.
You're picking up what I'm putting down. I was just making sure.
You can add some, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You mentioned private property. Has that private property owner approved of us working on their?
Yes, they have. It is, it is out in front of Roller King, and we were partnering with Mr. Transmission, who is also a Roseville Rotarian, in that, in that parking lot to.
Okay. And then the other question, I know the circular signs aluminum that hangs off the front of it, the top signs, though, plywood, and I'm a little worried about, is it well sealed, is it going to last a while?
I feel like the top sign, the Welcome to Roseville sign that he has proposed is also going to be aluminum. I think it's just.
In the quote, it says plywood, so.
Oh, it does?
That was my concern, is it going to last?
We could certainly take a look at that and confirm and modify if need be with Ralph.
And the third question is the city, since it's kind of like a gateway sign, sort of.
That's what I'm worried about, yeah.
You know, can we use our logo-ish stuff on there? Is that okay to do that? I don't have a problem with it, but is there, can somebody chime in about that, or are we allowed to do that?
Yes, it'd be appropriate, sure.
Okay, great. Just checking to make sure.
Is it fair to all concerned?
Yes, it is. It will be.
Will it build goodwill and better friendships?
Absolutely.
Will it be beneficial to all concerned?
And it will be fun for all concerned that are not removing the stumps of bushes out in front of the sign.
Those are the four of the five tenants of Rotary. Thank you, Renee.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation, Renee. I'll open this up to public comment. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to speak to this item? Now's your time to come forward. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Mike Herbert from Roseville Kiwanis. I just want to first say thank you to the board for hearing this item. I also want to say thank you to the Rotary for leading this. They did solicit our participation, asked us to purchase our own sign. We are, you know, purchasing a Kiwanis International sign to have posted on there. Just personally, I think it's an important advertisement of our community to show that we support service organizations and to create awareness of those service organizations in the community. Oftentimes, when we recruit members, they have an awareness that we have a presence here, and I think our club, Roseville Kiwanis Lions and Rotary do a great deal of service in the community, a great benefit, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Joe Flores, Roseville resident, 27 years, Roseville Host Line member for 12 years. And yeah, thank you very much, Rotary, and for your consideration for this sign. I think it just resembles love for community and service to the community, and respectfully, we ask for your consideration. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
You had a question. Are all these signs going to be circular? Do they all be circular, so they'll be the same? Thank you.
Okay. Unless the council has any further comments?
I do have just one more. So there's a comment made earlier about who's managing, who goes on the thing. I think that's an issue that is really important that we figure out, because I'm worried about some discrimination issue. I mean, who's going to be in charge, who's going to write the policy? Because we have a lot of service organizations, and if some are not allowed on there, who's taking the heat on that? Is that the city council, or is that you guys, or? Just curious if anybody knows the answer to that.
Well, our request is the funding request for our signs, not the management of their signs, I understand it.
Well, but we are putting a sign on top of something that's getting managed by somebody.
If I can just quickly insert myself, I had the opportunity to talk with Felix several times over the years, and I'd agree with you, very passionate gentleman, and exactly the point you bring, Councilman Albert, was the challenge. And he had talked about the Rotary and that club really kind of overseeing the overall sign and who would be placed on there, because as you, as you recognize, that's a challenge. That'd be a challenge, a challenge for the city to oversee, but certainly that was my understanding, is that the Rotary would oversee that, and they'd have a process and policy to do that. So it wouldn't fall on the council, because it is on private property, and it is a private sign.
Thank you.
I just have a comment, since we've got service organizations in the house and probably some watching on TV, and since you're already doing a lot of the legwork to get these circular signs printed, and they'll have a record now in their system of the printing and all the graphics and everything, just planting a seed, long-range planting, if anyone's looking for a similar project to this. We have an entry sign with the service club circles right outside of Roseville Square, out there on Douglas, that has fallen into disrepair over several years. Many of those circular organizational club signs could use some freshening up, and since the elbow grease is already put in place to create these signs at the printer now, it wouldn't be too hard to replicate that at a future date if somebody wanted to pick that up, so just wanted to throw it out there. You know, since, since we're talking about it, and someone's already done the legwork to create the design, we do have another placement of those signs on the east side of Roseville, and that's another service project. If someone so wanted to pick it up, would be, would be most helpful in rejuvenating that sign as well. So, but thank you for doing what you're doing.
You can go to the podium if you want to make a comment.
Don't know that I need the podium for it. Hi, I'm Russell Trump, member of the Rotary Club of Roseville. We are under the impression, because ownership has changed over there, that that sign actually will be going away. I can't confirm that, but that's the impression that we've been given by the future owner.
Yeah, my understanding was they were still going to try to seek to put it somewhere in the vicinity, maybe not necessarily on that particular property, so I just, I put it out there, since someone will be creating the signs in a circular manner similar to what it is. If it does happen to find itself getting erected somewhere else.
Or perhaps, or perhaps they can talk to you, and you have one sign. You don't need to have, you know.
Find yourself wanting to do some more yard work and labor, you know. There is an opportunity, but thank you for what you're doing. I appreciate it.
Okay. Anything else before we have a motion? I think we're ready.
Thank you. The city council will consider approving a request for $1,437.17 from the council discretionary funds for the Roseville Rotary Club Service Club Sign Project. If I can get a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. With that, we'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Haldeschild.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rucucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernuscony.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. All right, well, thank you, thank you for being here. Tell Ralph congratulations. I know he's worked on this for a long time with us. Okay. All right, we'll move on to item 8.2, council discretionary funds from First United Methodist Church.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We received a request for $750 for council discretionary funds from the First United Methodist Church for their Dia de los Muertos event, which took place last Friday. At this time, I'm not sure if Pastor Evans is here. Thank you.
All right. Mayor, council members, I send you greetings from our community at First United Methodist Church of Roseville, First Church. We take great pride in the fact that it's the first permanent church in the Roseville area, so we're very pleased to be able to come before you today. Our event, Dia de los Muertos event, was part of an ongoing Fourth Fridays event that we've been having ever since last year, last December. In response to some of the needs within the communities, some service providers came and said there's a need for there to be, you know, a free vaccine clinic, and so we provided that with the space that we had. And of course, as the shots were delivered, we needed people to come back, you know, about a month later to receive their second shot. Well, over time, it became quite obvious that there was a need not only to provide, you know, free vaccine shots, but also support services. So over time, we began to, you know, get in relationship with other providers who started to form a de facto resource fair that met every Fourth Friday. Over time, we wanted to extend that and saw that the community wasn't just looking for pamphlets and shots, but they were looking for an ability to community build. And as you know, we're only a stone's throw away from here, right across the tracks. And so we were able to, over time, create a community, a de facto community center that met every Fourth Friday, and as we began to grow into this, it began to be more themed. The most recent one was our Dia de los Muertos themed, which was well-attended. I want to thank Councilmember Rucucci and also our city clerk for coming as well. Previous, Councilmember Alfred came as well in previous ones. But it was a beautiful time. We've had many things going on. There was mariachi music, there was tamales, and these were, you know, we sought out local vendors, local small business vendors to do this. We had Aztec dancers, face painters, and the sort. And so it was a very, it was an excellent event for the community to come out, to kind of register their sense of belonging, and, you know, we're very grateful to be able to have the, you know, support from all of you, and really look forward to our community's continuing to find ways to collaborate and thrive together. So, thank you. If there's any questions around the event, I will take that.
So, your request is part of the cost for the event?
Part of the cost.
Who are some of the other funders for the event?
So, Health Education Council was one of our major funders. We've had some of our personal funders from organizations as well, but usually a lot of it is coming from, you know, our members and our church, and that is limited. And, you know, the thing that I've always tell people, I say, there's more people who want to invest in doing good than we know about, and we have to create pathways for people to register their goodwill, and we have to stop thinking small around what we think is possible based on what we may have individually. And so part of this outreach, right, this Fourth Fridays event, is also about increasing visibility, to allow people to know that there's a wonderful thing that is happening in Roseville Heights, and allowing people to kind of come along and come on board as well. And so, yes, part of this is around increasing visibility on the good work that we are doing.
Any other questions of council?
Just have a comment.
Yes.
I think that it's important to differentiate, and I think you've done that, that this is an event, we're not donating for a church.
No.
It is a community event. I've been there, I've seen the Placer County Health and Human Services there, Pusha Control Boards had a, had a table there before, and I think this really is a community event. And at the moment, I'm pretty supportive of backing this, but I'd like to see you guys maybe come forward through the Grants Commission, because it is a neat organization, and go through our Grants Commission to, to get funding that way. I think that'd be an appropriate method down the road, because they do look at all those different community events and who they serve. And what I, what I love about your organization is, when I've been there, you accept everybody. There's homeless people there, there's people in nice clothes, there's neighbors from all over, I mean, it's just, and you love on everybody. Everybody gets fed. I mean, it's just a fantastic community center, and, and so I thank you for that, what you do in the community. I think that's pretty cool.
Thank you. That is our goal. We envision ourselves to be, well, we're describing ourselves as a hub for good, a hub for hope, and it's a place where not only the communities gather, but it's a place where people and organizations of goodwill who need, quite literally need, a central location, a physical building, in order to come together, and we do a lot of things like eating and a whole bunch of stuff, but you're right. It is a place that welcomes all people, and, you know, one of the things I often say is that, community, community is not just a noun, but it should be a verb. It should not just be ends that we aspire to, but it should be the means through which we do this. So collaboration and growing together and honoring our diversity is something that is in our DNA, and it is such an honor to be before you, be before this body, and I just want to say on a personal level, I'm really appreciative of the work that all of you have done and continue to do in the service that you provide as civic leaders. It's not an easy time for many of our political leaders, but as I've been able to sit and be in this room and see all the things that are happening, I am quite honored to be a part of the city of Roseville and to be able to do this work with all of you. So I look forward to future partnership opportunities.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Yeah, just one of those, I went to the festival, and it was quite good, and children played games, and they were doing all kinds of fun things. I would just suggest, Councilmember Albert mentioned the Grants Commission, but if you do have a festival or something coming up in like the future and you're planning it, maybe come to us before you have it.
Yes.
But it's okay today, but you know, just in the future.
Anything else from the council?
Just, you know, I want to expand upon how this, this is a community. So you've, you've requested this, if I remember correctly, some of the other community nonprofits in the community, the Tommy Apostolis Fund, some of our community leaders funded this, the county helped fund this, so it was, it was a real, in addition to the Health Education Council, and Mr. Penashi, if I've forgotten somebody, you let me know, all right?
Yeah, Supervisor Bonnie Gore.
Mr. Penashi and his wife contributed to this. So it was really, as you said, a gathering and a hub of the community coming to support an important cultural event.
It is. One of our, we, you know, we work with child advocates, Prosper Placer, works with families, immigrant families as well, Latino Leadership Council, and a whole other groups. One of our benefits, I think, is that we are beginning to be seen more as a safe, incredible site for these communities, and so that enables our city and our county, like I said, Supervisor Gore has attended, to be able to have a place where, you know, the people will gather and feel like they can be supported. And so we are so grateful to be at this opportunity and this place within the 140 years of our church's long arc within this community, to be, you know, putting our focus on making sure that all of our communities in Roseville, our diverse communities thrive together.
All right. Anything else? So will your next event be, I think that would, I guess, 25th, but.
No. So our next event would be, it's a Thanksgiving theme, which is going to be more of an appreciation for the people who have been working with this project throughout the last year. Our next major event will be our Los Posadas event, which is a time where we process through Washington Heights. We're also going to be at Weber Park as well, there will be a celebration portion there. And we're also thinking about moving towards the businesses in the historic downtown area, and the process is going there and singing carols and doing a couple readings, and then we'll come back to. And then we'll come back to, back to the church and we'll have some music and some fun as well. So a lot of these events are outward-facing and also connecting with, you know, different organizations that can provide resources for the community. So the next big one is in December, December 16th, I believe.
Just let us know if you are. Let us know where to go to find that information.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
And thank you for the advice on the grants program.
Thank you.
Be sure to do that as well.
Thank you very much. I'll open this up to public comment. Is, is there anyone who would like to speak to this item? Okay. I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council.
Okay. So at this time, the City Council will consider approving a request for the $750 from the Council Discretionary Funds for the First United Methodist Church event, Dia de los Muertos, that was hosted on October 28th.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start off our roll call with Vice Mayor Haldeshelt.
Yes.
Councilmember Alverd, Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernascony.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to item 8.3, which is a fiscal year 2022-23 American Rescue Plan Act grant funding recommendations.
Good evening. This evening, I'll be presenting the 2022-2023 ARPA funding recommendations from the Grants Advisory Commission. In early 2022, City Council granted $1 million in American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA funds, to the Grants Advisory Commission for distribution to the Roseville community. The funds were intended to be dispersed over three years, as shown on this slide. The city manager and city attorney's offices worked to finalize new procedures to expedite the initial round of funds for the ARPA grant funding. Adjustments were made to certain criteria, and an off-cycle funding calendar was created in order to disperse the 2022-2023 funds before the end of this calendar year. At the July 2022 Grants Advisory Commission meeting, a subcommittee of three commissioners was formed to review, score, and recommend funding for the applications. The application questions remained the same as they met the spirit of the additional funding source, but the scoring for the ARPA funds was adjusted to ensure that currently funded programs were not overfunded and that funds were focused in the city of Roseville or to programs benefiting Roseville residents. Priority was also given to applications that requested $20,000 or more and needed funds for either one-time projects or support for new or expanded programs. This off-cycle ARPA grant allowed the commission to award a total of $350,000 to applicants. Twenty-seven applications were submitted for consideration, split between the three priority groups. One application was deemed incomplete, so 26 applications were reviewed and scored by the subcommittee. For this round, the total request equaled over $1 million, so it was a very competitive grant cycle. Thirteen out of the 26 applications submitted are being recommended for funding tonight. The applications received and recommended for funding represent all five social determinants of health, as well as a wide variety of programs that serve populations throughout the community, including youth, families, and seniors. This next slide shows the applications recommended for ARPA funding. The subcommittee's approach to application evaluation was to ensure alignment with the ARPA guidelines and that the applicants chosen were Roseville-centric in order to have the biggest impact on our community. Staff recommends that council approve the Grants Advisory Commission recommendations to fund 13 grants in the amount of $350,000 from the ARPA fund as identified in Attachment 3. And this concludes my presentation.
Okay. Thank you very much. So are you going to take them as separate votes, or?
Yes. So we're going to request...
Let's do public comment.
How about public comment?
Okay. We'll open this up to public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this item and come forward? We'll close public comment. Thank you.
At this time, we're going to request that Vice Mayor Haldeshelt take over the meeting as we, we need to recuse yourself. Is it one for you with one of the organizations? Is the Placer Food Bank?
Due to...
Due to a work conflict.
Great. Thank you. Yep. Thanks very much. So the item before us is the Placer Food Bank request for, help me, help me, help me. $20,000. Thank you. It's right there in front of me. You made it pretty easy there. So I will inquire if council has any questions.
We're just separating that one out.
Yes.
Because, you know, Mayor Bernascony has a conflict related to work.
And just, I'd like to clarify that the conflict is because it's a client of hers.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council?
I have one question, and it will apply to a lot of them, but it does apply to this as well. The dollar amounts are significantly low than the requested amounts for summer. Are we sure they're still able to perform it, you know, without donation if it's a new program or something like that?
Yes. So the subcommittee really delved deep into each request, and they were very thoughtful with the, with the funding. You would be amazed. So yes, everyone will be able to do the funding. That's actually one of the questions on the application.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you for that question. I'm going to open it up for public comment. If there's any public comment on the Placer Food Bank request for $20,000 in funding. Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion or any additional questions. It's the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you. So at this time, we have a motion to approve the funding of $20,000 for the Placer Food Bank. If I can get a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Haldeshelt.
Yes.
Councilmember Alverd.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And the record will reflect that Mayor Bernascony did not participate in the discussion for this item, this particular section, which is the Placer Food Bank, or the vote. Motion passes four to zero. Thank you.
Mayor Bernascony, you may return.
Did you vote on all of them?
No.
Just the one for... Okay. Wow. She's always gone.
Do you want to, do you want a motion on the remaining?
We're going to take a motion on the remaining.
Evening, Miss.
In addition to a motion on, what wasn't mentioned on staff's slide, but in the council communication is that you're also doing amendments to the grant process for this specific ARPA funding cycle.
I'm going to read the motion. Thank you. So at this time, the City Council will consider receiving the presentation and approving the presentation for the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, grant program, and approving the amendments to the funding schedule, eligibility, funding categories, and scoreage in the Grant Advisory Commission grant process for this program. The Grant Advisory Commission funding recommendations for fiscal year 2022 through '23 ARPA funding applications totaling the amount of $350,000.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Haldeshelt.
Yes.
Councilmember Alverd.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernascony.
Yes.
Thank you. And the record will reflect that these were for the remaining organizations, with the exception of the Placer Food Bank.
Okay. Well, that takes us to the end of our agenda. Thank you, ladies. Does our staff have anything to report out?
Thank you.
No further reports, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Rakucci, do you want to start us off with any comments?
You know, I'm just going to pick one because I think all of us have gone to a lot of different things this week. It's been, been very, very interesting. I think all of us were able to go to the groundbreaking for Sac State in Placer One, which is in Placer County, but it's right off of Fidament Road, so it's very close in, next to city of Roseville. But talking about the future of Sac State and the ability of students to be able to easily access from going from Sierra College onto, to State College, and then many times graduate in three years instead of four, for a bachelor's science degree. And there's also other entities and things that'll be coming out there. But if you drive out there now, you'll see a lot of bulldozers and things crossing and doing some excavation. But this is a start of what's county called their Sunset Industrial Project, and it's come to be. And also today, I was at, I was zoomed into Northern California Water Association. So it's an organization that talks about water within Northern California, primarily agricultural, but also cities as well, and what some of the latest legislative initiatives are going forward and how we can take an opportunity to make sure that we're looked upon and not, and some of our needs are being addressed. Tomorrow, I'll be going to our Northern California Power Association, and their meetings are held here at their headquarters here in Roseville. So it'll be on regional electrical issues as well. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no reports this evening, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor Haldeshelt?
Yeah. So since we met last, gosh, I just looked at it and it just went through my mind. So since we met last, had a number of meetings. Councilmember Mendoza and I had a Law and Regulation Committee meeting. A very informative end of session Law and Regulation Committee on Thursday, October 27th. The day before, we had the, I represented the council on the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency. And then on Friday, I had the pleasure of going to the Roseville Area Chamber of Commerce Strategic Plan Retreat on behalf of the city and, and see their new board members and participate in their strategic planning session tomorrow. Speaking of transportation, I'll be at Secog for a luncheon on the Capitol Quarter, Joint Powers Authority, and the mega regions. A lot going on. And it rained, and I'm a happy man.
Yes. We all are happy people.
Councilmember Alverd?
I had, as far as council, sidekicks or some other jobs that we work on. The Placer County Air Pushing Control District met. Nothing real significant there. The, same for the Sacramento Air Base, and I now represent the county for the bigger area. And then our Roseville Economic Development Advisory Committee met with the new, reappointed members that the council had approved. Real excited about the stuff happening in Roseville as far as economics go. We're just, I feel like we're doing such a good job of looking forward, and I think our councils, they've got it. They understand it, and I think we've really set a good standard. It's a good example. Another thing I want to mention is I got to attend a few community things. Family Fun Night downtown here was fun. Vendors were a little light, but a lot of community came out. And then just walked around my own neighborhood. My, my wife was gone. I was kind of by myself and thought, I'm just going to go walk around. And man, the families that were out in the community and the, and the families that just got involved in decorating their, their blocks. I mean, it was just amazing, some of the stuff that was out there. This is just a really fun place to raise a family. And I, you know, I know we win those awards all the time, but just walking around and watching it actually really take place, it's, it's pretty, pretty cool to live here. So I love my neighbors, and I know you guys do as well.
We do. All right. Just a couple of things I'll mention real quickly. We were all together last night. We're together tonight. Some of us will be splintered off tomorrow. Last night was the commissioner and board member recognition, and I just wanted to thank our clerk's office for putting that together. We had representation from all of our boards and commissions, and they, I just heard from them how much they appreciated the recognition. It's definitely a volunteer job. We need more of them, but it was a nice evening. I've been taking, Vice Mayor Haldeshelt and I have been taking part in the Homeless Task Force, the county-wide initiative to work through potential solutions, preventions to homelessness. And I'm also on a working group for communications. And some of the support staff, the community-wide PIOs are a part of that. And so we met again today. This task force is tasked with coming forward with recommendations, which I suspect will be sometime next year. Councilmember Rakucci joined me last week when we had a blood drive at the mall. We gathered 37 pints of blood, which Vitalan was very pleased with. I didn't realize that you have a pint of blood for every 10 to 15 pounds you have. So do the math on that. And if you want to lose a pound very easily, go give a pint of blood, too. Yes, I guess. Lost a pound by doing that. Let's see. Okay. And then, I'm not sure if the council knows, but last week, the city received a number of awards through PRSA, which is a state association recognizing public relation professionals. And one of the awards came through at the Influence Award Dinner was for the community vigil that the city held for our fallen Marine Corps Sergeant Nicole G. And the city submitted that award, and they reviewed all the submissions. And so I think we should all be pretty proud that we came together and held that. So I've attended ribbon cuttings. One of the fun things is, more fun things is I was able to go speak with seniors out at Oakmont Senior Living. They had all kinds of questions. Our fire chief left, but they did have questions about the first responder fee. And they spoke to that. They all love Roseville, too, and they have been here from a matter of a few months to 20 years. So I think that is it for our awards. We will not meet again until after the Christmas tree lighting, December 1st. So we'll see you all then, and I know we'll be very busy. I won't be able to make the law enforcement awards tomorrow, and I'll be with our economic development director in Sacramento for GSEC. So I know a number of us will be there for that.
Mayor Bernascony, I'd be remiss not to recognize one of your colleagues who received the Influencer Award the last Thursday, Kayla Scott.
And a library commissioner, library board member.
Library commissioner as well. Thank you.
Okay. So we do not have a second meeting in November, but we will be back here December 7th, which we anticipate will be the swearing-in of our new mayor. Details to come. So with that, I'd like to adjourn our meeting.
One last public comment, period?
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. One last public comment? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to any item that's not on the agenda? Okay. I'll close public comment. Thank you for the reminder.
Since, I'm sorry, Mayor, since we won't meet till December, Vice Mayor Haldeshelt, are you still running in the turkey trot? The city pulled their support behind you and wish you good luck in that endeavor?
You know, I'm running it. You should, you should run. I think we should all do it. Shall we?
I will be out there but not running. I will be supplying nutrition.
I'll be coming back from camping.
Oh, darn, darn, darn. Otherwise, he'd be there.
Thirty-six minutes ago.
For sure.
With the turkey trot. Okay. So with that, we'll adjourn, and we'll see you in December.